Aldman Wilson.
Here.
Aldman Holmes.
Here.
Aldman Tindham.
Here.
Aldman Grover.
Here.
Aldman Rainey.
Here.
Aldman Burris. Aldman Fisk.
Aldman, yeah.
Aldman John Batiste.
Yeah.
We have a quorum. I, Elizabeth B. Tisdale, Mayor of the City of Evanston pursuant to Council Rule 16.3, call for a special meeting of the Evanston City Council on Monday, November 16, 2009 at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at the Evanston Civic Center, 2100 Ridge Avenue for the purpose set forth below. Goal discussion, Climate Action Plan, Lakefront Development, Robert Crown Center improvements. This letter is dated Monday, November 16, 2009. Or no, it's, when is it dated? Before public comments, I have one announcement to make. On December 3, there will be a very important meeting from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center. The CTA has called the meeting to discuss much-needed improvements on the Purple Line, and it will be very helpful if everyone in Evanston shows up. Thank you. Now we'll have public comments. I'm going to name four speakers, and hopefully you'll come up and speak one after the other. Mark Metz, John Henderson, Elliot Zation, and Lynn Aramo. Mark, could you give your name and address?
Sure. My name's Mark Metz. I'm at 2125 Sherman Avenue. And I'm here on behalf of the Playground and Recreation Board, and more specifically as Chairman of the Subcommittee on the Robert Crown Center. As you know, the Rec Board has been working with the community to determine what ought to be done with the Robert Crown Center for many years, going back at least to 2003, which is far back as I remember, but I know even before that. And we're here to urge the council to move forward and take leadership on the reconstruction project. You're going to hear from the department some recommendations tonight about what ought to be done. But I think the point I want to make is that we think there's a real opportunity for a public-private partnership in some fashion or another. We're not quite sure how that's going to work out, but we know that there's some real possibilities out there. And there's a possibility of doing some significant fundraising around that project as well. And as we've discussed this with members of the community and within the Subcommittee, one thing's very clear, that we can't go forward with any of that discussion until the city takes the leadership position on this and decides what it's going to do and what timeframe it's going to do, and generally speaking, how it's going to get paid for and over what time. And once you take that leadership position, I think there's some real interesting possibilities for private funding and philanthropy and some different aspects of it that can benefit the city and residents a great deal. So we believe what you need to do tonight is move forward with a, move the project forward and put out a request for information qualifications to start giving shape to this whole concept of how this multiple-leg funding ought, might work. So we strongly urge that you move forward with that and take a strong leadership position, and then the committee can get to work and will support your decision and your leadership as much as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, John Henderson.
I would like to see if I can pitch to Katie Stalkup, please.
All right.
Hi, I'm Katie Stalkup. I live at 144 Greenwood Street. I'm here on behalf of the lakefront plan that citizens of Evanston developed over an extended period of time. I think almost a year, maybe more than a year, was spent with extensive discussions involving people from around the city, not just people that live close to the lakefront. I should say that a sizable amount of city funding went in to pay for the consultants that ran these very impressive and large meetings. And the overwhelming take-home message from the lakefront plan was that citizens of Evanston wanted to keep the lakefront open, green, and free, to the nth degree possible, free from commercial development. That was the overwhelming take-home message. The City Council approved and adopted the lakefront plan within recent memory, and I'm very surprised that suddenly, lakefront development is back on the docket. I hope that the council pays great attention to the adopted lakefront plan and honors the input of the consultants and the citizens of Evanston from across the city. One final thing that I'd like to say, I've heard that there is reconsideration of the parking ban that is currently in effect in the summertime after 9:00 PM. Now, this parking ban came into being before I moved to Evanston, I believe, in 1991. But I think it was put into place because there was substantial problems along the lakefront with drug dealing, with rowdy gangs of people, with unsavory activities. That's not a problem now, and I don't really see an overriding positive for changing the parking situation that might override the potential negatives, negatives that did exist in the past. Thanks.
Thank you. And after Elliot is Lynn Aramo.
Good evening. I'm Elliot Zation. I live at 715 Asbury Avenue, and I'm here on behalf of the Steering Committee of Citizens for Greener Evanston. What I have to say tonight is very general, but I think it's very important to reaffirm the role of Citizens for Greener Evanston in its attempt to continue collaborating with the city on the Evanston Climate Action Plan. We were pleased to learn that the city has reduced its greenhouse gas emissions. We were not surprised that the community has not done so, that the amount is increasing, but we're dismayed about that. And we realized when we worked on the plan with city staff that the most difficult part of this plan would be to engage the entire community, residents, businesses, communal organizations of all kinds, that unless we could engage the very broad constituencies of the community, the goal of the 13 percent goal would never be achieved with, certainly within the timeframe that we had set, 2012. Now, we reorganized ourselves after the plan was finished and the city adopted it, and we put a great deal of emphasis on outreach. We've set up outreach task forces that deal with businesses, with arts and culture, with nonprofit organizations, with religious organizations, and with residents where they live. And we realized that unless we could reorganize ourselves in this fashion, we would not achieve that kind of outreach. We also still have several of our substantive task forces still working on issues. We have waste and recycling. We have renewable energy. We have energy efficiency, and we have water and natural resources. So the task force, some of the task forces that were most active in producing the recommendations in the ECAP are still working. Now, this has been a pretty major effort on the part of volunteers. It's an all-volunteer effort. And what we want now to do is reengage with the city. We really need to have regular contact with city staff. We had people from city staff working with our task forces. We had people who advised us, who we could call when we had questions we needed answered. We knew who to go to. Now we don't. Without in any way trying to criticize Carolyn's effort, because I think it's been fantastic, we don't, we haven't had the contact with her office and with her. We don't have a representative of the city at our meetings, and this has been a loss. The city has, we're not coming here to ask for resources, but we want to have this kind of integration with both the council, but more importantly, with city staff so that we can help work on the problems. And I'll just give one example. One of the big issues is how do you prioritize the various recommendations in the plan? We would like to be part of that. We think we know a lot about it, but we don't know where that's going to take place, where in the city it'll take place. We want to be at the table. And finally, I just want to say that we mobilized a lot of people, and I think the council was impressed with that. We had lots of volunteers in both sort of iterations when we first started working on the plan and then when we reorganized ourselves. And people have put a lot of effort in, are very committed, but over time, people, it's very hard to maintain morale. And unless we have a very clear signal from the city that they want us to keep on working and they want to work with us, I don't think we'll be able to maintain that morale. So that's really what I'm asking for you, from you tonight, is to reengage with us and help us help you, because we're all in this together. This is not something just the city can do. It's not something that we obviously can do. So we want to be in partnership again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to try this again. Lynn, who lives at 414 Church. All right. And next is Lynn Mapes Reorden. And after her is Frank Cicero.
My comments are very brief. I live at 1433 Judson. I've lived there for about 10 years, and the reason I live there is because of this lakefront. It's natural environment, the use of all Evanston residents, of this incredible asset we have that will only be compromised by commercial development. And the parking ban is something I'm very concerned about, because I see the expense that Chicago puts in with their police and the monitoring of their lakefront and what goes on at that lakefront, having been at that lakefront at night, and I do not want that replicated in Evanston, just as a personal matter that is just so very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to leave a one-page memorandum with the council.
That would be terrific. Thank you.
Tried to make it green for two reasons. One is easy to find, and the other, we've talked about it before here. First, let me say, I want to speak with respect to lakefront development of the master plan. And first, let me say that I welcome people coming to the lake, lots of people from lots of places. It's great fun to watch on Sunday afternoons, we live a block from the lake, to watch cars unloading, families. A lot of people enjoy the lake, a lot of different languages being spoken and so forth. I think that that access, we ought to encourage that type of access. Secondly, I think we need to take steps in implementing the master plan that preserve the enjoyable experience for everyone now and for decades. And without commenting on specific activities, what I've given you here are just three, what I'd call three guiding principles that I think are useful. In fact, I think they're important in implementing the general principles of the master plan and in preserving the kind of open space that was referred to earlier, as referred to in the master plan. One is that there should be a presumption against additional structures. Structures alter open space. Structures block views. And by this I want to make clear, I'm not talking about views of homes in the neighborhood. I don't care about those. They can go to their second floors if they want to see the lake. I'm talking about views of people on the ground in the lakefront parks. One of the problems we have, and it's necessary, is that the riprap along the lake blocks views of children, it blocks views of shorter people like me in many places, and buildings just add to that problem. So that I think that if there are going to be new structures, they ought to be of the type that we have in some picnic areas and so on, a roof with supporting columns, but there ought to be a presumption against any such activities. Secondly, minimizing noise should be a primary objective. Noise-creating activities should be minimized, and some should be prohibited entirely. The lakefront master plan says that the additional use of, or one would be to consider additional restrictions on boats and motorized boats. I think in addition, certain activities for watercraft and for land vehicles, such as jet skis and parasail boats, that create a lot of noise, that create minimum enjoyment for a few people, and maximum discomfort annoyance for a lot of people, should be prohibited. Thirdly, I think that in looking at the question of whether commercial activities are permitted, I, in principle, I don't oppose commercial activities, as long as they're subject to the same kinds of standards we're talking about here. Many of the commercial activities that are proposed in the staff proposals, for example, would provide inconsequential income to the city, but they also, many of them, would be matters that don't cause permanent, inflict permanent damage and so forth, like increasing art fairs and so forth. Something that goes up with tents and comes down with tents is, in my view, not a serious problem. But others that are touted as income-producing or revenue-producing means, one, I think they have to be examined whether, to see whether the promises are too good to be true, because in many places I think they are. But secondly, many of those restaurants and others require permanent infrastructure, whether it's a building above the surface, or whether it's a change in infrastructure on the ground, and that's the kind of thing that should be discouraged under the previous principles I outlined. So these are offered as three guidelines that are specific in terms of evaluating activities people want to conduct there. I just conclude by saying that the lakefront master plan warned that our lakefront parks are being, quote, "loved to death." I think we should love them more, but we should do it in ways that don't kill them faster. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, David Reynolds, Ron Fleckman, and Junaid Rizki.
My name is David Reynolds. I live at 204 Davis Street. I am here, too, to speak about the lakefront. The lakefront is termed by some to be a missed opportunity. It seems that the opportunity we don't want to miss is to save something worth saving from commercialization for those who come from all over Evanston and elsewhere to find the pleasure, beauty, and the restorative feeling which the lake has to give us. The community went through a very lengthy and expensive process to determine the future of the lakefront. Views from staff, the business community, and residents were heard and melded together to form the Evanston Lakefront Master Plan. Having attended all of the public meetings, I can assure you that the overriding sense of the community was to keep the lakefront non-commercial, natural, and passive. That sense is enunciated in Goal 5 of the plan, which states, and an English teacher would have a real field day with this sort of sentence, emphasize a balance between natural, unprogrammed lakefront with a variety of lakefront-appropriate activity, programming to engage all users and generate limited revenue while honoring the lakefront's environmental integrity and surrounding neighborhoods. Please note that specific in this goal is that lakefront should generate limited revenue. That became a part of the plan because people were so concerned that commercialization of the lakefront would, to a great degree, diminish its natural appeal. John Muir said, "There must be places for human beings to satisfy their souls." This is what individuals like Burnham and other visionaries who plan parks and green spaces for our cities knew. They understood the importance of beauty and of nature, and understood their special value in urban environments. The lakefront offers something to the public which can't be found anywhere else. We are temporary stewards of the lakefront. Let it not be dispelled by commercialization on our watch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Ron Fleckman, and I live at 1657 Church Street, a very, very green development of the city. And I'm here to speak to you about the city's approach to the Evanston Climate Action Plan. The city's recent approval of the Green Building Ordinance demonstrated that the city was willing to take a stand. As a not-so-new addition to the green movement, and a member of the CGE Steering Committee, and a member of the business community for many years, I believe that we all must begin to view the environment movement and economic development as two entities that must be joined at the hip. It should be clear to us all that green technology and thinking is the wave of the present. However, it must live within the realm of economic reality, especially now. If this is the case, and all you have to do is look at the billions of dollars that are being spent publicly and privately for green stuff to confirm this, you, as our community leaders, have to determine whether to buck this trend or to figure out a way to capitalize on the momentum for the good of our residential and business citizens. I know the concern among some of you has been that the environmental and green movements did not always see the importance of economic realities. I believe that is not the case. I also believe very strongly that Evanston, a city in search of an identity, is ideally positioned to take advantage of this green trend by marketing itself as a green haven. Why can't Evanston reawaken its dormant industrial base to appeal to growing green tech firms across the country? After all, we are the home of one of the top universities in the world. We have one of the most educated workforces in the country, and additionally, we have a workforce looking for the next opportunity. If you look through newspapers, magazines, advertising publications, almost every product is trying to take advantage of green this or that. Most, if not all, Fortune 500 companies have sustainability efforts. Even Evanston has a sustainability member, staff member. With all of this momentum on our side, you must help, you must help educate our residents and businesses to realize that the perception that environmental efforts hurt economic development is just wrong. This thinking is contrary to the realities of the times. The new paradigm is that the nation and the economy can and will green itself out of the current economic recession, and green technology or environmental concerns will not prolong that. It only provides more opportunities for growth. Evanston can and should put itself in a position to capitalize on this. I'm here to respectfully ask the City Council to use CGE as a resource to the city and to allocate some of the city's limited resources in a green growth direction. Maybe Evanston can serve as an example of a small city that gets it and prospers from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Junaid Rizki. I'm going to speak tonight on the three goals in relation to the $8 million we have in a budget shortfall. Basically, I was, I'm going to, on the Climate Action Plan, the city's only 2% of the emissions here, yet the city's leading this effort. What interests me, there's a grant in here for $750,000, and I want to know if that's going to really be covering the salary of the Sustainability Coordinator in the 2010 and 2011 budget. If not, then where's the funding for this position? Because that was supposed to be had from grants. And I'm not trying to pick on this one position, because I think everybody on this council knows we're talking between 30, 40, 50 employees are possibly going to be let go here. While that's not been said, it's being discussed. I'm going to go on now to the lakefront. One of the issues I have there is, over the years, this council has given many people in this community what I would consider very nice deals. The city rents the art center on the lakefront, they rent it for a dollar. The facade in that building is falling apart. It's half a million dollars to fix. The city, where is the city going to come up with that money? It's not. It doesn't have the money. So these are the kind of problems of fiscal responsibility. On Robert Crown, Robert Crown would take, in these plans here that you're talking about, if you've got that building, it's probably going to carry out $1.5 million a year and add it to the budget just to borrow the money. If you go with these big plans, and here it's going to be $3 million, you don't have that money, and you know you don't have that money. And if, the thing I saw in there, if the roof is starting to fail, you better fix the roof, because it's going to cost just more money, just like the civic center. I mean, I walked in some offices here, and you had holes in the wall from all the leaks. So you've got to fix things that are there. And if there are structural problems in that building, because you keep saying that, then you better fix those. But I don't believe that, because none of, some of the reports never said that. I think that's been the thing here, that some people want to basically just get a new building. And I find that, I think as I looked at this, I wondered why we have double the staff at Robert Crown. We have staff for the ice rink, we have staff that runs the rec program. It looks to me like some of those programs there should be shut down, moved away, and the facility would have more room. And then you would probably alleviate some of your problems. I finally have a few more points. I found something very troubling in this report. Somewhere, someone, there was a claim in this report, they're carrying $134,000 in capital funds from 2003. To me, that's fiscally irresponsible to hold money, that much of the city's money, in a fund somewhere, waiting for projects seven years later. And that was supposed to be used for future, you know, more and more plans here. And the recommendations I saw there are more consultant reports that don't really do anything, but more of this planning that does nothing. So we don't have the money here, as you all know, or at least some of you know. I know you know, Wally, so, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Next, City Manager, we have a discussion of the Climate Action Plan.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. As you have mentioned, we have three goals to talk about this evening. We'll start first with the Climate Action Plan. Carolyn Colapi, our Sustainability Coordinator, is back with us after her maternity leave. We're very happy to have her back. As I mentioned with my 90-day report, I have reassigned Ms. Colapi from the Public Works Department to my office in order to provide a greater focus and attention on issues associated with sustainability and the implementation of the Climate Action Plan. She's here this evening to give you an update and answer any questions. Carolyn, welcome.
Thank you. I'd first like to commend the members of the council for making the Climate Action Plan one of your community priorities. And it looks like I'm having some technical difficulties, so please bear with me. It was a year ago this November that council accepted the Evanston Climate Action Plan, and tonight I'm going to give you an update on the past year. And I'm going to start with a brief overview of the plan, more so our emissions. Before we put together the Evanston Climate Action Plan, we did a community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and this is what it looked like. We started with 2005 as our baseline year. We didn't have any data going any farther back than that, and our greenhouse gas emissions are a reflection of our energy use. That's electricity, gas, our waste, our motor fuel. And here you see that in 2005, we had just over a million metric tons of CO2 equivalent in greenhouse gas emissions, based on the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement, which we signed in, I believe, 2006. We had agreed to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions 7% below what we thought they were in 1990. So based on our 2005 emissions, we backcasted to assume what our 1990 emissions were, and then the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement also asks that we meet that goal, that 7% reduction in 1990 emissions by 2012. So we projected what those 2012 emissions were going to be, and what we came up with was a 13% reduction from those 2012 emissions to get to that 7% of our 1990 emissions. And that's roughly about 140,000 metric tons of CO2. You may notice that this number's a little bit different than what you'll see in the Climate Action Plan. That's because our emissions factor for electricity for our region has changed slightly. It's a little bit less now. And here's our emissions profile, and it's important to note that the bulk of our emissions come from our commercial energy use. So focusing on the commercial sector and their energy use is a good use of our time for reducing our emissions. That 2% up there in the gray is the city, and that includes our water plant, and the 26% is residential. 14% And the 26% is residential, 14% is, is transportation. There were some difficulties in collection, in collecting that data, so it's probably actually a lot larger than that, more between 20 and 30%. But this is the data that we have, and it's consistent. And with limitations, this is what we have to work with for the, the coming years. And the 1% is our, our waste. We look at waste because there are emissions tied to disposal, but we also get a substantial credit the more we recycle. So, I've now collected all of the data through 2008 to update our emissions. I'm working on a report that will go through all of the Climate Action Plan strategies. There's over 200. And we'll go through what has been implemented, what we've gotten started in the past year. We'll also have a detailed analysis of our emissions inventory. Unfortunately, we're always going to be a year behind, so we don't have our 2009 emissions yet. And some of that's tied to how we collect our data and when some of it gets, is ready for us to use. And what you'll see here is the city of Evanston, we represent 2% of our, our total emissions. The good news is, we, as a city, our operations, our buildings are going down in our emissions use, or in our emissions. And we've actually gone 3% below what our target goal was for the city. Part of that is, is that we, as a city, our operations and buildings are not growing. So it makes it a little bit easier, combined with our efficiency improvements, to, to reduce our emissions. And then the, the harder picture to look at is the community-wide emissions updated. And there was a substantial increase between 2006 and 2007. Otherwise, we are seeing a decrease. We'll have more answers in a couple of months when we do an analysis of the emissions inventory. But what you see in 2008 is we've actually gone above what we projected we were going to be at in 2012, by about 6,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent. And that takes us from that 13% reduction goal to actually 14%. But we do have some reductions, if you look 2005 to '06, and '07 to '08, and hopefully '08 to '09, we will continue to see reductions, especially since the Climate Action Plan is, has been in place for a year. And we'll hope to see some of that in our 2009 emissions. As I said, I'm, I'm working on a report that's going to go through all 200-plus strategies. But tonight, I just want to highlight a few things that have helped us jumpstart some activities related to the plan, that we didn't think we were going to have the capacity to do a year ago when we put together and presented the, the plan to, to city council. One of those things is the American Reinvestment, no, Recovery and Reinvestment Act, which we, as a community, over 30,000 residents, received a formula grant of $7,049, $749,700, just under three-quarters of a million. With that funding, we will be doing some energy efficiency improvements at some of our buildings. We're going to be able to install our first solar panel on a city building, which will happen at the water plant. And we're also putting about a third of this funding towards low-income to moderate-income weatherization grants in the community. Another opportunity that was a good fit for launching the Climate Action Plan, the city was asked to participate, one of about a dozen communities asked to participate in the ComEd Community Energy Challenge. Through that, we put together a plan, and based on what we proposed, a bunch of sustainability measures, from energy efficiency improvements at municipal buildings, outreach and improvements in our business sector, and also at the residential level, we, ComEd and the state came back to us and committed almost $500,000 in reserved energy efficiency program funding. That's not a grant, it's, it's money that, in many cases, requires matches. But $350,000 of that is, is just for our businesses through the ComEd Smart Ideas for Your Business Program. And they have just about spent through all of their program funding for the program year, which ends at the end of May. So we now still have some money for our businesses to take advantage of and make, make efficiency improvements and get some, some help from ComEd. And then, finally, we, I want to acknowledge the Citizens for Greener Evanston, who really formed as a result of this plan, many of them helped put together the plan. And it's a group of enthusiastic, dedicated individuals who have put their own time and resources towards really trying to move this community forward and, and meet this, this goal. I also want to point out that between the funding for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant and Community Energy Challenge, the plans that we have in place for, for projects will have about, almost 14,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent emission reductions from those projects. And now I want to just talk about what I would recommend. 2012 is, is fast approaching, and as you saw, we've kind of gone the wrong direction with our emissions. We have a, a big task in front of us, and I'd like to recommend a few things, and this is not to say that we shouldn't focus on any of the other strategies in, in the plan, but to really focus in the next year on the, the following, because they will take advantage of funding that is out there now, and have energy efficiency savings, and, and also because I think we need to set some priorities for long-term planning to, to meet the target goal. And the first recommendation I would make, given our connection to the ComEd Community Energy Challenge, is that we really, and also that our commercial sector is so much of our emissions, that we, we really push to get our, our businesses connected to ComEd's energy efficiency incentive programs. The savings that you'll see on the next couple of slides are not hard and fast, they're really conservative estimates. And when you're dealing with, with buildings and energy efficiency, it's, there's a lot of variables, and some are going to achieve more energy savings and, and some not so many. But there was a, I just want to, there was a restaurant down in Chicago that took advantage of ComEd's Smart Ideas for Business Program. They invested just under $3,000, did a bunch of lighting retrofits. It really wasn't a very big project. I think they had 75 incandescent lights that they swapped out with CFLs, and had a couple motors that they changed out. Three thousand, under $3,000 for the total project, and they are now saving $400 a month on their electric bill. The rebate from ComEd was between $300 and $400, not huge, but that's just an example of, of what can be done, and, and the benefit to the businesses is huge, for, for very little investment. Another thing I would recommend is that we really push to get our low and moderate-income residents connected to the state weatherization, free weatherization program. There are other programs out there that I would encourage we connect our residents to as well. But this one in particular, this year with stimulus funding, went from just under $30 million in program funding to $242,000 million. That's substantial. And it's a free program. The savings aren't as substantial as we can see on the commercial side, but it's a free program, and it's of great benefit to our residents. The next thing I would recommend, that we really work to collaborate with our, our largest institutions. One of the strategies in the Climate Action Plan is to bring together the Big Six, which includes the city. We represent around a third of Evanston's workforce. And as large institutions that use a lot of energy, we have a lot of potential to, to save at our, at our buildings and through our operations. But additionally, and I think more importantly, by coming together, we can start having some conversations about how we can think beyond just our operations and, and come up with some, some projects that, together, we can, that, that can have a, a great benefit to the community. With three, three good years to go, I, I think, and, and over 200 strategies in the plan, I, I think beyond what I'm recommending for this year, that we, we prioritize for the next three years, some strategies that aren't just some of the simple, low-hanging fruit, but some, some bigger picture, more complicated. We, we really need to achieve some emission reductions, and that's going to take more than a couple of lighting retrofits here and there. The Citizens for Greener Evanston have spent a lot of time and research looking at the idea of renewable energy generation out on Lake Michigan. And I, I think we, as a community, need to decide if this is something we want to move forward with. And, I mean, this is 10, 15 years out, if, if we decide to pursue it. And if not, I think we really need to look seriously at our alternatives for renewable energy generation, because energy efficiency is, is a big piece of it, but we, we've also got to connect it to renewable energy generation. And it's got to be bigger than just a solar panel here and there on a couple roofs. We, we need to think community-wide and, and come up with a way to, to generate our own energy here in, in Evanston. And then finally, our goal right now takes us to 2012, and it's, it's a pretty small emissions reduction. We need to set a long-term goal. If, if we want to be a leader in sustainability, and if we want to catch up to the other communities out there that are really taking this seriously, we need to look at an 80% reduction in our emissions by 2050, and that's at a minimum. And as you can see, this isn't an easy thing. We, we have a, just hitting 140,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent in a couple of years is going to be a, a big task. Looking at a number like 80% by 2050 is hard to swallow. So, we have a lot of work in front of us, and I think if we really get serious and all work together, we, we can do it.
Any questions? I have one. Wasn't most of the discussion of windmills in the lake, windmills that would have been, or wind turbines that would be off of Northwestern's campus?
I, I believe so, where it would be a little bit less visible to the community, yes.
They were going to slant them on an angle so that they would be even less visible. I'm just putting in a plug. All right, Alderman Rainey?
Well, in keeping with that same comment, I was wondering if the, those who are opposed to enhancing economic opportunities at our lakefront also oppose wind turbines in the lake? I mean, is that seen as a negative in terms of the people we heard tonight? I'm, I'm not in touch with them, so I don't know.
I don't know.
But I would like to send that question to those groups for a response. I don't, it's not really a staff issue. I'm just curious about the politics of that.
Alderman, when?
Well, Alderman Rainey, as someone who does share the view of many people who came here this evening, I don't see a problem with putting wind turbines in the lake. You know, we put them all over our farm fields, and I think it, you know, they probably wouldn't be very visible out on the lake.
When I saw that picture, I felt it was stunning, given the testimony earlier. I just wasn't sure if, where the line was drawn. That's all. It was a friendly question.
Yeah, no, no, I, but I, I think I'm, I would be all for it. I have a question for Carolyn, though. Can you tell us what the jump between, is it '05 and '06, or '06 and '07 could be attributed to?
'06 and '07. It's probably due to growth, but more growth than we had projected when we originally put the numbers together. But this is just a real preliminary look at the numbers, and I haven't done any detailed analysis yet. That should be ready in a couple of months.
So that would be growth in terms of commercial growth or transportation use?
We added a lot of residential units around that time, maybe a little bit before that. It could be partly that. I would have to look a lot closer at what was developed, and, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Carolyn, I just had a couple of questions for you. When you were talking about the various, the breakdowns of the various consumers, you referred to residential community and the city as the major three. Are you including in the commercial, the university, and the hospitals?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding is that Northwestern has taken a very active and strong approach to energy efficiency.
Yes.
And is, but I would like to know more about what they're doing and how they're doing it, and how they work that into their design program for their new buildings. So that's my first question. My second question is regarding the wind turbines on the lake. Just as, in my memory, it was a discussion held especially during the mayoral campaign. And I remember hearing two discussions. One of turbines off the Northwestern campus, close to, close to shore, and the other one about 10 miles out into the lake. And so I, I feel a little uncomfortable discussing wind turbines until we've had a chance to find out exactly what, what would be the approach that we would want to take. I would just, you know, caution everyone that, I mean, there are other environmental concerns as well. We're in a major wildfowl flyway that runs all the way down from Canada, through our lakeshore, down through central Indiana, and then down, obviously, into South America. Includes a large number of very large waterfowl, including sandhill cranes that stand four feet high, that come and, and roost down on the lakefront. And all of these are a concern about having large wind turbines on, so close to the, to the lakefront. And obviously, the lagoon is a very protected place for the wildfowl, is, I think, something that we should think of as a place that we would want to protect. But the impact of the turbines is something that I'm, I'm interested in. And I think that's all I had for right now. Thanks.
Well, in answer to your first question, I can't speak to what Northwestern's doing. I too have heard through many people that they are doing a lot. And I think you'll find that a lot of our larger institutions who have big energy loads are looking and probably ahead of the curve in identifying opportunities for reductions, because they have such substantial energy loads and utility bills. I do know, I believe they, for all new buildings, are going lead silver and had decided that a few years ago, before we passed our ordinance. In terms of the turbines, what I had heard was about two, three miles out. There are so many things that, that need to be looked at. Yes, birds. No one has looked at whether or not, from my conversations that I've had with the state, there haven't been any studies of nighttime bird travel over the lake, and that would have to be looked at. We'd also have to look at the habitat under the water, whether or not fish would be affected. There are, it's, it's a big conversation, and there are a lot of viewpoints that are going to need to be considered. And I'm just asking that in the next year, we make a decision as to whether or not we want to take that proposal seriously and really go for it, or if it is just something that our community as a whole is not supportive of. We need, we need to make that decision now, because it's, it's going to take 10, 15 years to get something like that actually developed and running.
I'm sorry, I remembered my last question. Recently, we've talked about, and I have approved, a plan to replace the Civic Center roof. Was there any input from staff in your office to install solar panels on the Civic Center, at least on the west side of the, of the roof?
I don't believe that that was discussed.
I'd like to know about, about that, about what your recommendation would be.
One of the challenges that we have in the Civic Center is that we don't pay for electricity. And that makes it real challenging to get a cost, a payback that makes sense, especially with renewable energy, which is, you know, unless we could find grants that would cover the entire thing, it would be a, a hard cost to justify. Renewable energy is, is still very expensive.
But we could generate electricity and sell it back to Commonwealth Edison. Is that, isn't that true? I know some homeowners are doing that.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Fisk, I think one of our concerns is, if we do that, they'll say, "Well, then we'll just sell you all the electricity for the whole building." So there may be opportunities in other facilities, I think, as we're making some good progress on a pilot basis at the water facility. We obviously have a police department, community centers, other facilities that may make more sense over time. But we'd be happy to take a look as we're making the final plan specifications for this building and come back to the council with the information.
It's just a huge roof that faces west, so.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned money being out there right now for both residents with regard to weatherizing and businesses. And you mentioned, you know, our challenge to connect with all these people. What are we doing? Are we being aggressive about it? Are we pursuing it? How are we going about, if there is money out there now, what are we, what are we doing about that?
Well, I apologize, I've been gone for the last three months. So, much of the ComEd Energy Challenge Plan has been on hold, and we have until May to complete our plan, and it is a priority of mine for the coming months. We unfortunately actually have a deadline of the end of January to get our businesses connected to those reserve dollars. So, we really need to step up our efforts to do that outreach to the businesses.
It seems like it could be a very expensive winter for a lot of residents, too, if we don't, is there any emergency money, or is there any positions that we could help them this winter with, winterizing homes and deferring some of the costs of?
The funding for the weatherization program, they can apply now for weatherization. In terms of assistance with their energy bills, I-
Oh, no, no, just with the assistance.
Right, and the work will take a while, and there may be a year wait to actually get the work done. I think there's a lot of money, and in terms of people to do the work, probably not as much at the moment. So, there could be a wait, yes. And that's why we should really encourage people to go apply now, and get approved now.
And where would they apply?
CEDA is going to be running the program as they have in the past, and they will take on the additional dollars. And we have a CEDA office in town. I'm sorry, though, I don't know where it is.
And it sounds like not having enough workers to do the work is kind of a win for us, too, if we can get money to train workers and help with employment.
Ideally, yes.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman Tendem, I may add, as you can tell, there's a lot on Ms. Colapi's plate, and so what we've done also is really reinvigorate our efforts for volunteers and interns. And we've been able to put the word out to Northwestern, and not surprisingly, several students have come forward to help with that, specifically the neighborhood weatherization program. So, we're hoping to have a team of NU interns working specifically on that. And this is also a great opportunity for community volunteers. Obviously, lots of folks in Evanston very interested about these issues, so Carolyn's trying to harness community volunteers in addition to NU student interns. So, we're going to do our best between now and January to get the word out, and as we move forward, especially with this ComEd grant, because it's really a great opportunity. There's only a handful of communities throughout the state of Illinois that are participating. So, with limited resources, we're trying to be creative and leveraging volunteers and interns.
Thank you. Alderman Jean-Baptiste?
Yeah, City Manager, my questions were similar to Alderman Tendem, but I wanted to find out whether or not we have begun to partner with CEDA, and what are deliverables, what are expectations as we move forward to put in place the wherewithal to make that happen?
Carolyn, do you want to address that a little bit further?
Well, prior to leaving for maternity leave, Sarah Flex and I had a meeting with CEDA, and we did discuss some strategies for increasing the number of participants in Evanston in the program, especially in light of the additional funding that's come. We also talked about ways that some of our workforce could possibly do some of that weatherization, given there's going to be a greater need. And we need to continue the conversation.
And Alderman Jean-Baptiste, I think of all the issues that Ms. Colapi mentioned this evening, I think it's probably that's the number-one issue as far as moving forward with this program. And I think now, it really is a catalyst with Ms. Colapi returning from maternity leave, getting some volunteers. But of those four or five things that she indicated as being priorities, that's probably our number-one right now.
Right. And I know that Citizens for Greener Evanston is already involved in doing weatherization. I remember last year, there was some initiatives being undertaken in some neighborhoods. So, my suggestion would be that we try to centralize the information, so we know what's going on, we know all the partners involved, and we try to make sure that we follow up on that. I do have a second question, Carolyn. The whole carbon offset areas discussed as a growth business opportunity. I don't know what you know of it, and if you could talk a little bit about that. And what is, what do you see the role of the City of Evanston perhaps in that kind of business environment in the future, if any?
Just to clarify, you're talking about selling perhaps some of our emission credits. Is that correct?
Yes.
As we achieve emission reductions, selling those credits? It's not something I can speak too extensively on. I know in the past I've looked at, there are organizations out there that do have grants. They're very specific as to what types of activities they will fund the emission reductions in. For example, the Delta Institute was paying farmers to reduce emissions for credits. And it's something we can certainly look at as an opportunity for future funding, but I can't say much more on that at this point. I would have to look into it further.
Okay, so if we could get some feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
First, thank you, Carolyn, very much for your report, and welcome back. We're glad to have you. And in response to Mr. Zation's comment about wondering whether there's a role for Citizens for Greener Evanston, of course, there is. And I can't imagine undertaking reductions in emissions that we need to achieve by 2012 without the involvement of Citizens for Greener Evanston and the larger community. This is going to be an enormous undertaking. My interest is in, as Carolyn said, the focus on the commercial, and how we help our businesses, both large and small, achieve the reductions they need to, to put us where we need to be by 2012, in the next three years. And I'm wondering what role then the city can play in directing policy, or assisting, reaching out to those small businesses or larger businesses, and helping them understand that they need to be part of the team, and assist us with our aspirations towards 2012.
Well, I think for the coming year, we should really focus on our outreach. We have sent out notification of the funding through the e-news, through highlights. We can certainly do more outreach to businesses, and having assistance from our council, I think, would be of great benefit, given your connection to your individual wards and the businesses within them. I think those would be good places to start.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman Grover, if I can add, as Ms. Colapi mentioned, really working sort of dual-track. It's the large businesses that we've not been as successful in gathering some momentum on. Carolyn's had some initial discussions with a new sustainability person at Northwestern. Rotary International, the largest property tax-paying business in the City of Evanston, has reached out to us and has asked for our assistance in their work, in addition to the hospitals and the other large institutions. So, we'll, I think, continue to do that. I think on the small business side, the Evanston Chamber of Commerce can be a great partner, and we've had some initial discussions. They co-sponsored a breakfast meeting we had with ComEd about six weeks ago introducing this program, so we'll continue to follow up, really, by the big businesses as well as the small business side.
We had over 60 participants at this breakfast that we collaborated with the Chamber and CGE on. It was a really good turnout.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Carolyn, we've all agreed, and the city manager stated it, that the weatherization program is the most important program and/or the priority, and you said it's free. What is the weatherization program?
It is federal funding that gets funneled through the state. It is for income-qualified households. I don't know the income guidelines off the top of my head, but it is, actually, I think they just changed it to, I'm not going to try to guess, I'm sorry. There are income qualifications, it's low-income households, and the crew through CEDA comes out, does an energy audit of your home, identifies measures for improvement. Usually, it's insulation and air sealing, and potentially a new furnace, if your furnace is, would benefit from an upgrade.
Do you know what, CEDA on Emerson is taking applications, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
And do you know what the wait list looks like?
I'm sorry, I do not.
Because CEDA on Emerson is not doing the work.
Well, that's what I wanted to come to.
It is now, it is centralized. It used to do the work. I used to run that program when it was there. I didn't know if it was the same program or not, but it sounds like it is, because those are the same kinds of things we used to do. But it's being run out of downtown, I believe. And I just think it's very important that we let people know, and if you could find out, that would be great. What is the wait time? Is there a priority for different issues affecting the household? And bring it back to us, because we're telling people, "It's free, go apply for it," but they go apply for it, and there's a two-year list. You know, it's not very hopeful.
I would be happy to find out more details on that.
Thank you very much. Also, I don't really understand what the ComEd Community Energy Challenge is. I'm sure you sent us paperwork on it, but I didn't understand it. And I don't understand how a commercial entity participates.
Okay. The ComEd Community Energy Challenge is a pilot program. There are about 12 communities in ComEd service territory that are participating or competing against each other. We all have put together sustainability plans that have proposed a variety of energy efficiency improvements and other sustainability measures within our municipal residential and commercial sectors. ComEd has a variety of energy efficiency programs for both residential and commercial sectors that are mandated by the state. It's legislation that passed a few years ago. This is the second year of their program, and each year that funding is increasing. And they are not having any trouble going through that funding, but recognize that further down the road, as the requirements go up, they have to meet a certain number of KW, kilowatt-hour savings each year with that funding. And as the years go and that budget continues to increase, they're going to have a harder and harder time reaching those smaller businesses in these communities. And so, this pilot program is really an attempt to work with these communities and come up with some innovative and creative ways to get to those harder-to-reach customers. They have contacts with the big businesses, the big commercial entities are participating, and essentially, it's a variety, they've got a prescriptive and a custom program. If you replace so many T-12 lamps with T-8 lamps, you'll get a dollar amount incentive for that swap-out. That's one example of a prescriptive measure you could take to participate in the program. There are motor upgrades you can make that would be really appropriate for restaurants. These are all electric initiatives, because ComEd sells electricity.
Now, does the, does the entity get an application before they start doing these kinds of things?
Yes, they do.
Do they have to get their changes approved in advance?
Yes, they do.
And I'm not worried about Target or all those, I mean, I know they're a problem, but I'm more concerned about trying to get some of the smaller businesses-
Yes, they need to get pre-approved through ComEd. The application's online, all of the program information's online, or they can call ComEd and get information that way. And they can also, ComEd set up a bunch of trade allies who are contractors that do this type of work, and they're happy to come out and look through a building and make some recommendations on efficiency improvements that would qualify for the program.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
I just did want to follow up on the referrals for the weatherization program, because it is important for people to understand that you can't do it at Neighbors at Work at 1249 Emerson, that it is at the downtown office. And so, any kind of partnership, we need to really be working, maybe with the downtown office, and Alderman, I mean, Mayor Tisdale, maybe our representative that sits on the CEDA board, might be able to make some inroads for us, you know, there. I think that-
We can certainly ask her.
I think that we need to do that. Then, I wanted to go back, Carolyn, before you left, if I remember correctly, when we received the $700,000 grant, was there not, I believe, maybe like $10,000 set aside for some kind of programs for seniors? Do I remember that correctly? I think you made that proposal to the Human Services Committee?
We set aside $250,000 for weatherization grants, which would, the income guidelines would be above the state federal program, but would be the cap of our rehab program. So, that would benefit, or could benefit, some of our senior residents.
So, how does that work, then?
We have just received the funding, and we have not yet gotten that program together. It's not ready yet.
So, that's forthcoming, then?
Yes. We have a year and a half to commit the funding and three years to spend it.
Okay.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
My light wasn't on.
Oh, okay. You're on a long list. Alderman Wilson?
Just, I guess, these are more comments than questions, but I think we should probably promote and point out the information that's on the city website for anybody who happens to be watching, because there is a lot of good information there. There are suggestions, there is a copy of the Climate Action Plan, so these are things that people could all be doing now, and you don't have to look too hard to find that. It is on the city website. And I just want to encourage you and everybody else working on these programs to continue to look towards the future. I imagine that when somebody decided we should build a water plant, you know, whatever it was, 100 and some years ago, somebody said, "What are we ever going to use all that water for?" So, I'd like to position ourselves for, long-term, for the future. We're not going to build windmills or any other plant in the next year or two, but I'd like to be well-positioned, you know, 15, 20 years down the road to be able to take advantage of whatever technology we can utilize, so continue with that vision.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, thank you very much, Carolyn, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Next, city manager is lakefront development.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as part of your goal-setting, the council identified lakefront development as a goal. It did not specify exactly what that meant. So, we're here this evening to try to elicit from the council some direction on where you would like to go on this topic. I've asked Doug Gainer to come this evening and kind of give a brief overview of the work that the city has done in the last several years on lakefront development planning, and then would ask, at the conclusion of his presentation with your discussion, to give us direction as to what you feel are appropriate next steps on this goal. Mr. Gainer?
Good evening. Yes, I'm going to provide an overview of the lakefront master plan that was approved and go through it, and I'm going to try to go through it fairly quickly. I know a number of members of the audience have seen it a few times, and members of the council, some members of the council. So, tonight, we're going to background information and statistics, review of the recently completed projects. We're going to review in-progress projects, and we're going to view some of the future CIP identity projects from the plan. First of all, lakefront uses and revenues, the annual lakefront park use, scheduled picnic reservations, about 217, about 11,000 attendees. Beach attendance is approximately 135,000. Dog beach attendance, almost 15,000. The dumpster street launching, about, almost 1,600. The church street launches, almost 1,000. The lakeshore and the ethnic art festivals attendance come in at about 50,000 is our estimate. The Starlight Concert attendance is about 6,000. And of course, it's hard to really estimate what the year-round park and path users, we can't track those, but we know it's in the tens of thousands. The annual lakefront revenues is just under $1 million, as you can see. The capital investments from 1980 through 1999, there's really very limited data that exists. However, what we have been able to find is about 1.2 million dollars for shore protection in the early 80s, 800,000 for the church street boat ramp, including approximately a 400,000 grant from the federal- a 400,000 grant from, from the federal government in the early 80s, $700,000 for pathways, furnishings, reforestation and lagoon improvements, including a $200,000 grant from the federal government in the early 80s, and $300,000 for renovations at seven buildings in the, in the early 80s. Total expenditures from 1980 to 89 was 2.7 million dollars, total expenditures from 1990 to 1999 represents 375,000. The capital investments from 2000 to 2009, the breakdown of investments, about 3.9 million dollars. First of all, the Clark Street Beach and Dune renovation project, it's ongoing now, it's 1.4 million dollars, design and construction. The Dempster Street Beach non-motorized boat storage facility is 393,000 dollars, and the Lakefront from Lee to Clark Street, the Bike Path, which is also a project underway now, is 245,000 dollars in design only. In addition, we have the Lawson Park, which is the Noah's Playground at Lighthouse Landing, the American with Disabilities Act Project 2007 and 8, 1.3 million, design and construction, includes 400,000 dollars in private donations. All other Lakefront projects in 2000 to 2006 represented about 530,000 dollars. The Park Strategic Plan in 2001 outlined a strategic plan for all park system improvements, including a number of significant needs for the Lakefront Parks. The majority of implemented improvements have evolved, involved neighborhood park renovations only and very minimal Lakefront investment. Adopted in 2001, the city's strategic plan in 2006 outlined a vision for the overall city. In recognition of the Lakefront's ongoing deterioration, strategic goal for Objective C, continue to develop an environmentally sensitive Lakefront Master Plan. This was unanimously approved by the council on March 27th of 2006. We started a Lakefront vision in 2007, five workshops and public meetings were convened, outlines a series of goals and objectives for the Lakefront Master Plan, it was completed in 2007. The Lakefront Master Plan 2008, seven public meetings, two Planning and Development Committee presentations, and one council presentation. Master Plan created a roadmap for specific improvements to be constructed at the Lakefront over the next 20 or more years, unanimously approved by council on January 28th, 2008. All these documents are available on the city's website, Lakefront documents are located at thecityofevanston.org/lakefront, Lakefront Plan. This slide represents many, many of the Lakefront projects as listed in the strategic or the master plan. If you look at the color key in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see blue represents recently completed projects, the red in-progress, green, future CIP identified projects, and black, future master plan identified projects. I'm not going to go through this list now because I have slides that we will follow up with now. Project One, the Lighthouse Landing ADA improvements, and Project Two, Jen's Gents and Grotto Reconstruction, the design and construction of the ADA-compliant ramp from the parking lot to the building entries and the beach area, design and construct ADA-related improvements to the building entry doors and the plumbing fixtures. The project status, this was completed in 2009 with a final cost, architectural fees of $52,000 and construction fees of $444,000. This now makes the Lighthouse Landing Beach Area and the Lawson Park totally accessible for all. The Jen's Gents and Grotto Reconstruction, the project scope, stonework and fountain system of reconstruction, the status was completed in 2009 with a construction fee of about 42,000 dollars. Additional information, this was totally funded through private donations. This is progress of projects that are currently going on, the Clark Street Beach and Dunes renovation, the Dempster Street Beach non-motorized boat storage, and the Lee to Clark Bike Path. First of all, the Clark Street Beach and Dune renovation project, the design and construction of the beach restroom and entry facility at Clark Street, design and construct new access drive, remove the existing restroom and Church Street access drive. Currently, the status, contract was approved by council on August 11th, 2008, concept design, including three public meetings completed in fall of 2008, the construction documents and bidding completed May of 2009, currently under construction with completion anticipated December 2009. The estimated costs, architectural fees, $190,000, and that includes the fees for Dempster Project also. Construction fee, 1.2 million dollars, and the funding status, excuse me, is fully funded, prior bond issue and the FY 2010 CIP. Project scope for the Dempster Beach non-motorized boat storage, design contract approved by council on August 11th, 2008, concept design, including four public meetings completed in fall of 2008, the construction document and bidding completed in June of 2009, currently construction with completion anticipated December 2009. Estimated cost, architectural fees included in the Clark, in the Clark project, construction fees, 393,000 dollars, and this is fully funded through prior bond issues. The Lee to Clark Bike Path, the project scope, design and reconstruct over a mile of bike path, design and construct over one mile of security lighting. The status, phase one and two engineering is completed, phase three engineering and local agency agreement adopted by the city council on 11/9/09. Project will be led by IDOT March 2010, and construction is anticipated the spring and summer of 2010. The estimated cost, engineering fees of 342,000 dollars and the construction fees, 1.69 million. The status, partially funded, prior bond issue, ITEP, which is through IDOT, and the Recovery Act, pending additional 2011 CIP. Review of the future CIP identified projects, and there are 11 on this list, Lee to Clark pedestrian paths, the lagoon suction pit replacement, the Deering Shelter repair up at Lighthouse Landing area, the Fog and Signal House renovations at Lighthouse, the Evanston Arts Center and Coach House Apartments and Greenhouse, the Garden Park renovations near South Boulevard, the lagoon area improvements, lagoon building furnace and replacement, Greenwood Street Beach and Dunes renovation, the Evanston Arts Center improvements, Church Street Launch Ramp and Dog Beach improvements. Excuse me. I can go through these very quickly now, but this is the pedestrian path from Lee to Clark. We are, as I said earlier, working on the Bike Path, this will be the second path, and we'll separate the two, and it's a tough picture to look at there, but again, this is all online in the, in our master plan. Lagoon Suction Pit Replacement, this is the area we need to repair in order for our staff to be able to work on the mechanics of this, construction fee is about 45,000 dollars. The Deering Shelter Repair, this is a picnic shelter at Lighthouse that is used quite heavily for picnics and gatherings, that's, construction fee is about 25,000 dollars, you can see the funding status, it's pending 2011 CIP. A lot of these are out-year projections, and it all is dependent upon grants and funding through the city. The Fog Signal House renovations, these are national historic buildings, the two buildings on either side of the Lighthouse are extremely disrepair, they need roofwork, HVAC, woodframing, it needs a great deal of work, we have applied for a federal grant about seven years in a row and have been turned down seven years in a row. The Evanston Arts Center and Coach House Apartment and Greenhouse, replace the greenhouse, which is failing, an inefficient heating system, re-glaze the greenhouse, and renovate the Coach House's interior. This is scheduled for 2011, you can see it's a project that, it costs about 450,000 dollars or so. Again, this is out in the year 2012 at this point. Garden Park Renovation, this is a park on the Lakefront, it's a neighborhood-type park, it's hidden quite well, it is a typical renovation project like we have done on so many parks in, inside the city. The Lagoon Area Improvement, project scope, reconstructing existing waterfall, repair stonework and enhancing the landscape, this is about a 250,000 dollar project, we have that scheduled at this point in the year 2013. The Lagoon Building Furnace Replacement is a project about 17,000 dollars and is scheduled in the year 2012. Greenwood Street Beach and Dunes renovation, this is a design and construct a new beach restroom and entry facility, drop-off at Greenwood Street to replace the existing deteriorated and non-ADA compliant structure, we would be removing the existing Greenwood Street Beach facility. The, the status is scheduled for design in 2012 and construction in 2013, the estimated costs, architectural fees and construction fees are an estimate, we have this, at this point, in 2012 and 2013, and it would be, again, one of these projects where we would be involving the neighborhood, the community in our, as we move forward with architectural design. The Evanston Arts Center improvements, the project scope, rehabilitate deteriorated sections of the exterior structure, including windows, postades and stairs and roofing, project is scheduled for design in 212 and construction in 213. These are all estimated costs at this point. Church Street Launch Ramp and Dog Beach improvements, the perform wave modeling for beach armoring and harbor system, design and construct improvements to reduce and eliminate harbor dredging, repair deteriorated harbor areas, consolidate and reconstruct the boat parking, and protect the Dog Beach from wave attack. Projects are scheduled for design in 2014 and construction in phases beginning 2015. Estimated engineering fees, 350,000, and of course, construction is something, fees we can't really estimate at this point, it would all depend on the results of the testing that we would be doing. That really is a quick overview of the projects that we would have planned between now and the year 2015. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mind you all, we have questions. No?
I don't think it's just questions.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yeah, um, during the public comment, you know, there was a statement made that one of the main agreement of those who were planning and, and the proposal to us that we adopted is that we should minimize revenue, I forgot how it was stated, maybe it was Mr. Reynolds? Limiting. Yeah, limited, limited, okay.
It's in the plan.
Right, and so, what does that mean then, Doug? How did you understand that? Because I, I never thought that limited revenue means, you know, just not exploring the various options to bring in revenue. We renovating the boat storage facility, which will allow more boats to come in, you know, what, what did it mean to, to you guys in, in terms of your view of, as staff?
I think it was mentioned earlier, commercial development. We run sailing and canoe rental out there at the, at the beach now, I don't think that was what was meant in limiting revenues, it was commercial development. We heard over and over again, no restaurants, as a matter of fact, when we were looking at the design of our facility at Clark Street, it was very clear that they, the folks didn't want to have a large restaurant or a large concession stand, so there was, and I think that was the message. But as far as renting, you know, having a sailing center similar to what we have now, those kinds of improvements possibly, I don't believe were included in there, in, in that opinion.
I think that, given the fact that we're bringing in a new Director of Community Development, and one of his main tasks is going to be to pursue economic development, that we cannot, while I agree that Lakefront is a residential neighborhood as well, so we do not want to create an atmosphere where there's activities all the time that imposes on, on the residents, I agree with the notion of minimizing the noise. But I think that we cannot limit the options that may be available and, and just take a position that we will not, when we say limited revenue, then it means that we will not consider any other creative options that may be put in, put before us. So I think that the council has to be open to the possibilities of what might come to us from leadership in the realm of economic development. This is an asset that we have, and we are not talking about having, you know, a lot of revenue, we are talking about expenditures, our stripping, our stripping revenue this year by, we're already facing a shortfall of 8 million dollars, and I would think in the next three, four, or five years, I don't know, many people may have an expectation that the recovery is forthcoming and we will get back to the boom era that we enjoyed maybe only five, six years ago. I, I don't see it like that. And I think we have to be open to all kinds of possibilities and not foreclose any creative ideas that may be brought before us. I do respect, because I, I've sat on the Human Services Committee for a long time, and we debated the issues of events at the Lakefront, and I was always a supporter of trying to make sure that we limit the number of events, that we not overdo it, and we heard the concerns of those who live on the Lakefront. But I think that we cannot be paralyzed by the concerns, I think the principles that have been articulated here, I agree with them, the, you know, trying to not obstruct the, the view of the beautiful lake, the, the whole greenery that surround that, trying to minimize the disruption to people's lives. But I think we have to open the framework and not allow ourselves to take a hard and fast position as to what should go on in the Lakefront.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
When we got together and we came up with the priorities, and of course, this was a priority and it was included on my list, but to me, it's a priority to implement the plan. So, you've articulated that the plan's been developed, and in my mind, the goal is to figure out a way to get these things done that are part of that plan, but also to make it consistent with that. We want to preserve the asset, we want to preserve the character of the Lakefront, at least I do, and the difficulty is that it might come with a cost, fees might have to be increased, we might have a few more events, but to me, it's to do these things consistent with the overall plan that's been developed, you know, not to open a food court, not to do anything, not to put up water slides into the water, nothing of that nature in my mind. You could certainly probably generate a lot of revenue doing things like that, but at too great a cost, so, and these are things I've heard some people suggest, so, in my mind, it's not these kinds of things, it, it should be things that are consistent with the plan, and, and that's what I'm looking to do.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
Mr. Gainer, have we had, besides the Lake, Lakeshore and the Ethnic Art Festivals, have we had any inquiries or requests for other like activities for the Lakefront?
Yes, from time to time, we've had requests for musical concerts for four or 5,000 folks, which we just don't have a venue for, but it's been suggested at the Lakefront and at James Park. So we've had from time to time requests for specific types of activities. However, as has been pointed out by Alderman Jean Baptiste, there has been a policy adopted... However, as has been pointed out by Alderman Jean Baptiste, there has been a policy adopted by the council to limit the number of activities and activity days at the Lakefront. So that's a policy that we have been following.
So the policy, and I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that. I don't remember seeing it. Somebody will have to point it out to me. So it's limited to two activities, which would be four days for the year?
No.
Because each one of those events are two days?
I'm sorry if I didn't express it properly. There's a limit on the number of activity days at the Lakefront for the summer. So that includes fun runs, the festivals, the concerts. So I think there's, it's in the area of about 20 days or 21 days that we can have these kind of activities at the Lakefront. That includes the festivals or the runs, the concert series that we run at Dawes Park.
That would be the Starlight Concerts?
That's correct.
Which are not revenue producing?
That's correct.
Okay, alright.
Alderman Winn?
Yes, Alderman Holmes. We adopted the limitation on the Lakefront usage, I think it was before you joined the council. And part of the initiative there was because, there were several things. One, every run, every race, every bike event that was coming down the Lakefront, someplace north, decided they wanted their last staging area to be in, on the Lakefront. And if we had responded to all of those, we would have had some charitable event happening in the Lakefront every single Saturday all summer long. And there was this realization that we really wanted to have both the combination of the events that are normally Evanston-based, like the Arts Festival and the Ethnic Arts Festival, and then Evanston-based activities in the Lakefront, on the Lakefront, but also have days when there isn't a major activity on the Lakefront. So that if you want to go over and have a picnic with your family, you're not contending with, you know, bicyclists on the 300th mile of their trip, you know, heading down into Evanston, into Chicago. And also, there was a realization that when we have these very large events, you do wear out the park, you know. Eventually, if you have too many of them, the grass just doesn't grow back. And so, and that we also wanted to put, invite some of these groups to see some of our other parks, like Lovelace or James. And so that's why there was this effort to steer some of these events elsewhere. And the Starlight Concerts originally started off entirely at Dawes and now they are in other parts of the city. So that was a result of a community-wide effort to limit the number of activity days, formal activity days, organizational activity days, so that it didn't overwhelm the park or the people who used it. I did want to-
Can I just?
Sure.
I understand that. Was there any conversation, because those were better economic times then, but was there any discussion in terms of looking at the activities in categories such as revenue producing? I see a difference between, say, a bike run or a concert or an art festival. So was there any kind of categories or just, these are a number of days and that's it?
No, I don't think, well, I think the, and I'm trying to remember back that far, but a lot of it was based on, and Doug, you'll remember, what are these, which of these activities are Evanston-centered and which are like a national charitable organization and they want to use Evanston as their last staging ground, which isn't really an Evanston-based organization. The people who are coming through aren't necessarily Evanstonians, some of them might be, but that it's not like one of our Lakefront festivals, which really is Evanston-based. The people you're drawing from are from the area. They're going to come back to Evanston at some point. Or our Starlight Concerts, which are for the community, that, you know, we had all these requests and we still have them for, you know, use of, as a temporary use for our Lakefront or our parks. So I don't think we were looking necessarily at what generates revenue or not, because I'm not sure that how much of these, like a bike race, well, I mean, like a staged bike race as opposed to the international bike race would make money for us. I think everyone has to pay a fee, but mostly it was, what, who's using the Lakefront and how much is that really for Evanstonians? I mean, if you have a large charitable group that comes with 1,000 runners through, does that prohibit people here in Evanston from really being able to access the park easily for that day? But I did want to go back to the Lakefront Master, so I don't, Alderman Holmes, I don't think we brought that into an account, into account. But I do want to bring up a couple of points. One, I think that we should move forward maintaining the purpose of the Lakefront Master Plan because it was a community-generated plan that, there was enormous amount of thought that went into it. We had meetings all over the community. There was a lot of participation in it and there was overwhelming consensus that the Lakefront should remain non-commercialized and passive, meaning you bring whatever you want to the Lakefront to do there. If you want to bring your badminton net or your volleyball net or your croquet set, you come with your big group and you use the lawns and then you pack it all up and you go home. And that, the whole point is that, or you just come and read, or you bring a picnic, or, but there isn't a sense that we build structures or create commercial facilities there. It's, the Lakefront is there for everyone to enjoy in the way that they want to create, but not that we create for them. For instance, a water slide, that idea did come up at one point. But also, most of the Lakefront is residential. I mean, there's only a small portion of it that isn't. And so that would mean that you would concentrate any commercialization there and it's one of the best parts of our Lakefront. So overwhelmingly, the consensus of the community was less and less commercialization and improving and enhancing the things that we do offer at the Lakefront. For instance, the non-motorized boat launch where we are making money at a fairly good clip. I don't know whether we currently are, but to, and encourage people to come out and rent a kayak, a canoe, a sailboat and take lessons and use our Lakefront in that way, but not to build a restaurant or have some other commercial activity. The Lakefront as it is, even in its deteriorated state, is an economic generator for us. It's why businesses locate here. It's why people come here. Doug, your first slide showed the number of people who visit the Lakefront, the number of people who come to the festivals is 50,000 a year. I'm not sure that we, what the extra benefit would be if we did have some kind of commercial entity at the Lakefront, that it would outstrip what we are already doing there. I think actually it would take away from it. So I would encourage the council to continue to maintain the goals of the Lakefront Master Plan. And if you read through them, they're all about enhancing and maintaining what we have and improving it in the ways that we've neglected all of these years. Because it is, we're unique along the North Shore. We don't have as commercialized a Lakefront as Chicago. And Willmet, I don't know, I haven't been able to get to the Willmet Lakefront for years because I don't have a parking, a Willmet parking sticker. So what we have is something that nobody else has. It's a passive Lakefront that people can come in and use with their families wherever they want. So I would encourage us all to read, reread the Lakefront Master Plan. I reread it again today. It was a very good document. It has, it emphasizes our green initiatives. It emphasizes the ways in which the Lakefront improves the lives of all of us. And I do remember a very interesting point that some people made during the unfortunate Marina discussion years ago. But the only good thing about it was, one of the things that I remember is someone commented that we live in a very dense urban environment and the lake is wilderness. And we are really, it's something that's very unusual and rare for people who live in a big city environment to live next to wilderness. And the lake really is still wild. And it's always stayed with me that it's one of the things that I think that is so fascinating about living here in Evanston, is that we live next to this water wilderness.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I want to actually echo Alderman Wilson's comment that, I think when we talked about Lakefront development, that my understanding is, that was talking about implementing the Lakefront Master Plan. As, when I was on Plan Commission, I looked at the plan a lot. But also to enhance the current activities, such as the non-motorized vehicle activities, cycling, having more amenities for people that are coming to the beach as well. And then I actually have a follow-up question to Alderman Jean Baptiste, because I actually agree with your points of what, what are some ideas? What are some other ways to look at activities? And did you have some specific ideas for activities along the Lakefront? I just didn't know if you had something in your, in your mind that you were thinking about?
No, I didn't have any specific ideas. I just didn't want to foreclose, because we have leadership coming to guide us in many different areas of economic development. And we've been very lacking in that. And I think that, you know, we have to stay open to the possibilities as opposed to foreclosing the options. That's what I'm talking about.
I just wasn't sure if you had-
No, I didn't, I didn't have a specific plan, no.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman Winn, I don't think anyone says it as well as you do. I mean, you've just been, you know, a leader on the Lakefront, Lakefront preservation, Lakefront use for so many years. And we're really lucky to have you. I mean, even as a private citizen, I thought, thank goodness, Alderman Winn is up there talking about the Lakefront. There are a couple of things that I want to say. First of all, when we were talking about setting these priorities, when Wally asked us to come up with the 10 goals or priorities for the council, and I'm sure Alderman Winn and I agreed on this, when we started to talk about the Lakefront, it wasn't in terms of Lakefront development. It was the Lakefront as a priority for the community. I think if you ask anyone why they come to Evanston, the first, the top three will be anything from the Lakefront or transportation or schools. And depending on the person, the Lakefront will always be up there. So I think we have to look at economic development as, involving the Lakefront, is why, why does it bring people into Evanston? I mean, the Lakefront really is where we all go to heal. It's where we go to enjoy. It's where we all go to get a sense of what Evanston was in the beginning. And it's, it's a wonderful place to be. In the summers, I go down and eat my lunch down at the lagoon and I look at the ducks and it's wonderful. I feel fabulous for being able to share a little bit of that urban wilderness with my neighbors and other people who are down there. And there are a ton of people down there. And they travel through, they have a wonderful time, but they really come to regenerate and enjoy our passive Lakefront. In terms of, the questions that I would like to ask staff is, I really would like to know a little bit more about revenue generation of the facilities that we've been talking about, the Art Center, for example. I think the Dog Beach has been a wonderful addition to the Lakefront. I know tons of people who go down there. It took a very small effort on the part of the city to set that up, but it's been just hugely popular. And a number of people have been writing in and asking if that could be expanded to more, more months of the year. But in terms of, you know, maintaining our facilities on the Lakefront, especially the Art Center, the fog houses, I think we need to turn our attention there and make a priority list of what really needs to be done and how urgent some of these things are. And as I said, sort of get our mind around that economic development of the Lakefront isn't necessarily trying to attract more people, more, more, more events, more, you know, active use of the Lakefront, but really looking at how that makes all of us feel about the community that we share. And as Alderman Winn also said, the Lakefront should be serving Evanston residents. I'm sure that we could schedule almost every day of the summer for a special event from some group outside of Evanston, but that would deny a lot of people in Evanston the use of, the use and enjoyment of the Lakefront. Finally, in, in terms of the leadership that's coming, I, I'm excited about new leadership coming into Evanston. I think it's going to be wonderful to have people who come in to have a fresh look at our city. But I also, more than that, I trust the people who have been using the Lakefront for years. I trust that all of us have discussed in all of our campaigns leading up to our service on the City Council, that the Lakefront was an important part of that discussion. So I would encourage all of you citizens to continue to come out and show your support for the Lakefront and the Master Plan and help us move forward with the important renovations that we need to do down there to ensure that it's a resource for all of us in the years to come.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Gaynor, for your report. I speak only for myself, but I was interested in having Lakefront development as one of our goals because it is our greatest asset in Evanston. You ask, can people, and they will all mention the Lakefront, as you say, Alderman Fisk. And my idea of Lakefront development is really more, in the words of the Master Lakefront Plan, is finding the highest and best use for our Lakefront and, and finding the balance between passive and active uses. And for me, that means elevating the Lakefront to our list of goals and priorities and perhaps then making this Master Plan a living document and implementing the plan. The plan is not even two years old. It is very relevant still. It's an important document and it was a great process that produced it. I think I was part of that process, as a matter of fact. So that our Lakefront activity would not stay static, so that the Master Plan doesn't stay static. So in, as you suggest, Alderman Jean Baptiste, so that we're thinking about our Lakefront in different ways. Not only revenue generation, but how our Lakefront can be a magnet for everyone. And so that every resident in Evanston understands that this is your asset and this is something where you can spend time and enjoy and, so that we all use it. So for me, the issue is access to the Lakefront, maximizing its use by all of our residents, not necessarily out-of-towners coming in to use the Lakefront, but for everyone who lives within Evanston's borders so that we all understand that this is an asset that belongs to all of us. And that's what I meant when I wanted Lakefront development as one of our council's goals, is access, find the Lakefront's highest and best use and implement the Master Plan.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Just briefly, not about the Master Plan, but relating to something you said, Doug. I would like a list of all of the activities that have been, that have come to the city requesting, using some space within the city, outdoor space, that we've had to turn down. I'm mostly interested in revenue generating activities or activities that charge a fee, for example, concerts. And secondly, non-revenue, or at least not now, non-revenue generating activities. Like in the past couple of years, I'm sure some stand out. I'd like to know what those are. I think James Park is underused in terms of public activities. I know there's baseball and whatever, soccer and that, but for entertainment-type uses, I think it's underused.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Seeing no further lights.
Alderman, I mean, Mayor Tisdale, could we add to that list that I would like to see the 21, the 21 days, 20 or 21 days of whatever use we have of the Lakefront, how those are utilized now? Because I think that it would be in order to look at what those activities are so that we can see what may be, may be the best use of that time, especially if they're not Evanston organizations that, you know, sort of taking up those days. I'd like to see those and have those as a part of that.
Absolutely. We can provide that.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
And I would ask that, Doug, maybe you dig up one of the old memos on the Art Center. We've asked a question already about the kind of investment, what money we spend to upkeep and renovate the Art Center.
We can do that.
And we, all of us already know that they pay a dollar a year. Because I think as we approach the budget season, we may want to take a second look at that.
Sure.
Perhaps talk about the capacity of the group that is now running the Art Center. And perhaps talk about the capacity of the group that is now running the art center to pay and, you know, explore some alternative use.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, Mr. City Manager, do you have clear direction?
No.
No. I was afraid you might answer that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think I've heard two kind of competing comments. One has been sort of to stay the course on implementing the downtown, I'm going to say downtown, the lakefront plan. The other has been to sort of look at options either, and I guess the question I have is should we look at options actively or perhaps be aware of them as they come along and bring them to you as they may make sense? As Alderman John Baptiste has mentioned, you know, we continue to refocus our economic development efforts. Perhaps as interesting ideas come along, we would bring them to the council for discussion. But I'm kind of a little confused as to what the direction is.
All right. Does anyone want to try this? Oh, now I have too many lights. Alderman Wilson.
I don't think any of us would ever want to preclude you from bringing us an interesting idea. So to the extent that somebody comes up with something that is of interest, but, you know, I think within the general parameters of, you know, not a large construction, not a casino, you know, nothing dramatic or draconian, so.
In no particular order, because all your lights went on at exactly the same time. Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Well, I'll just reiterate what I stated, and it's consistent with Alderman Wilson. I'm not talking about scrapping the plan that we have. But plans are not meant to be dogmas. They're meant to be roadmaps at given point in time as to what we should do. And so to move forward, to face our challenges, we not only must continue to enhance our resources, but also maximize their uses. As Alderman Grover indicated, what is the best use under our current condition? And I would love to see our Director of Economic Development and Community Development and our City Manager weigh in on some options and share those with us. That doesn't mean that we will accept them automatically, but I think we should be open.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
I just think that any issue, any activity that comes to us should be shared with the council. Not having anything to do with the lakefront, I mean, big venues, professional tennis, professional football, music, whatever, we should know that at least it's coming to the city of Evanston. A request is being made. It has nothing to do with the lakefront, as far as I'm concerned, just that we should know and have conversations about those things. I mean, I know that there are mindsets from the past about certain kinds of activities. And we've lost some really exciting activities, but there's always room for a new discussion. And that's all I'm saying. Has nothing to do with the lakefront.
Well, if your desire is to be sure that the council knows of everything that's been brought up as a possibility for the lakefront, I think I have told most of you that there is a small professional lacrosse team that is looking at possible venue of Northwestern down by the lake. There is parking on campus that would hold all of it. And their other option is possibly Evanston High School. So that's a use that I don't think is contrary in any way to the lakefront plan.
But that's a, that's a permanent use, is it not? Or is it a...
It would be, yes. I mean, the lacrosse team certainly hopes their professional lacrosse team.
I mean, that's, that's good to know, but I'm talking about events.
Okay. In the spirit of full disclosure, they have brought that to me. Alderman Nguyen.
Well, I don't want to be a stick in the mud and said, no, I don't want to look at every single idea. But part of the reason why you develop a plan and have a sense of guidelines and a roadmap is so that when you get the big wow, pizzou idea that comes in, you've already thought through what are your basic values and goals that you want to adhere to, to create your vision. And you aren't reactive to every single thing that arrives, that comes across, but you've already, you've taken ownership of the lakefront and you've decided what your vision is going to be. So with that in mind, I'd say, yes, I'll listen to things, but if someone decides, we really do want to build a water park, I want to say, no. I mean, we decided we would have this lakefront be mostly passive and we would not have intensified commercialization on it. So that's what the city council adopted and that was what the community decided together along with the consultant. And so, no, I won't look at any, every single idea that comes in the door, no matter how much money it generates on the lakefront. If it, you know, we could generate a lot of money on the lakefront if we just rezoned the lagoon to D4, R6, you know? We could, we could, you know? But, you know, everyone's chuckling. No, I mean, but, you know, it's a slippery slope. So that's why we developed a plan, so that we didn't have this reactive process that we have lived through in our development over the last 10 years. That's why we have a budget policy. That's why you have guidelines. So if there's something unusual out there that's very, that is in keeping with the plan, I'll look at it. But I'm, I'm not going to look at something that says we can bring 10,000 people every single Sunday and we'll bring, I don't know, great music there to the lagoon. No, I'm not interested. So that's my view.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things that I like about Wally so much is that Wally says to us that he'll do whatever the city council tells him to do. And so I think it's a little bit of unfair for us to then throw this back into Wally's lap and say, well, we're not going to decide, so Wally, you and your new staff member can decide and then bring it back to us. You know, the fact is that we have a lakefront plan that's less than a year old, that went through a long public process, many, many, many meetings all over the city. Everyone, everyone had an opportunity to talk about what they wanted to see on the lakefront. And I don't think we should be turning our back on that. I think that we should respect the money that we spent on consultants and the time that the citizens of Evanston took to comment on the lakefront. And as Alderman Nguyen said, there are some uses that simply are not compatible with that public discussion and the conclusion that was, you know, arrived at by the last city council. And so I want to respect that. I do want to leave the door slightly ajar for the city manager if something exciting comes along to bring it to our attention. But I don't want to say to the city manager, this should be a priority for you and your new staff member to go out and look for ways that we can, you know, energize development on the lakefront. I don't want to do something that's inconsistent with the plan, and I think that would be inconsistent with the plan. So again, I think that we just have to be decisive on this and say, we've done the plan and that's it for right now.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I think Alderman Nguyen unfairly scolded me because she obviously didn't hear me say, this has nothing to do with the lakefront. I have a fear that while there's such great leadership on the lakefront, that certain things get rejected out of hand because they want to be at the lakefront, yet there are other venues in this town where they might possibly fit. And I'd just like to have some information about that. And Alderman Nguyen, you know, you can put in a note that you don't want to be told about these things, but I do want to be told about them. I do want to be told about them. And I think it's very narrow-minded to say, I am, I'm going to exclude every possibility. Who's talking about a water park at the lake? Nobody's talking about that. We're talking about activities that might come to us. A water park may be at James Park would be a great idea.
I think, Alderman Rainey...
But just because you don't like a water park doesn't mean, I think you did not hear me say...
No, I heard you say...
Has nothing to do, but, but then you made a little speech about, oh, you're going to protect the lakefront. We all want to protect the lakefront. But there are certain opportunities I believe this town is missing because of narrow-mindedness. And I don't want to be a part of it. And I'm asking the city manager, and if this is confusing to him, I'll be glad to send him a memo. I would like to be told, if I'm the only one here, of any activities, events, venue, whatever, that comes through the Parks and Recreation Department, to please let me know about it. And I don't, you know, I don't mean a PTA car wash. You know what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. To sum up, City Manager.
I have a much better idea now.
Do you? Good, because this discussion is concluded and next is the Robert Crown Center improvements. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Holmes, your light?
I did want to say that I did not envision any major 43-plus-story buildings on the lakefront. That was not in my thought. But I do think that we should ask the city manager and the new staff to actively look at anything that would be, that would be helpful to us, that would be within the plan. So actively is for me, Wally, if that makes it clear. So I'm on the active end.
Yes, ma'am.
Holmes, would you put your light on for a sec, just so I can be sure? Yep, that's working, okay. For Robert Crown, I was given just before the meeting an insufficient number of these, so everyone has to share.
And Madam Mayor, I believe this was from a private party, so this is not part of the presentation.
This is not part of the presentation. This is a...
Is it on mine, ma'am?
This is, I don't believe so.
This is from a private vendor that just unsolicited has provided something.
For a public-private partnership to rebuild Robert Crown.
This is administrative.
I got this an hour, less than an hour before the meeting.
But it's submitted too, and it's got our logo on it.
Yeah, it does come across. It does have our logo.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the final goal piece for this evening is the Robert Crown Center. Lots has been discussed. I think we'll just move right on to Mr. Gainer's short presentation. We're hopeful that you can give us direction this evening on next steps.
Thank you. We're going to move right into it. And the Robert Crown Center was built in 1975. It's an ice rink complex. It's 61,000 square feet. It has two skating surfaces. One skating surface is about 85 by 200, and the other is about a third of that size and is used for primarily ice, figure skating. It's got a full basketball court, dance studio, three multipurpose rooms, and amenities including a refreshment stand, six locker rooms and storage equipment. The community center and the ice rink are extremely popular. The building is heavily used, up to 18 to 20 hours a day, seven days a week, and it is definitely a source of revenue. The Evanston Playground and Recreation Board has made it a priority to address Evanston's indoor recreational needs and the future of Robert Crown Center because the facility is no longer appropriate for its original purpose, much less the evolving recreational needs of the community. For background purposes, work performed in 2003. In June, A Epstein &amp; Sons International presented a comprehensive analysis of the Crown Center, which provided detailed information on the building's physical condition, code compliance, and cost to renovate the facility. In August of 2003, at a Human Services Committee meeting, the Playground and Recreation Board was directed to conduct a study of users to review current programming and facility needs at the Robert Crown Center. September 30th, October 7th, 9th, and 14th, 2003, the Playground and Recreation Board gathered public input during community meetings held on these dates. In December of '03, the Playground and Recreation Board made a presentation to the Human Services Committee, which included information about the building's major deficiencies. And they were ADA noncompliant, current building code noncompliant, exterior drainage problems, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and refrigeration deterioration, roof system failure, security issues, and the lack of women's team locker rooms. There's general concern that the Robert Crown Center did not meet community needs, as noted from comments made at the public meetings. In order to address these concerns, staff investigated six options for facility renovation and reconstruction. Option one was to develop a new, expanded facility at Robert Crown. Two was a new recreation facility at Crown Park and a new ice complex at a separate site somewhere in the city. Option three was renovate an existing facility with no program alterations. Four was a new facility at Robert Crown Park with minimal expansion. Five was expanded and renovated existing facility at Robert Crown Park. And six was a modified existing facility and new ice complex at a separate site. No action was taken by the council as a result of the work that was performed in 2003. In 2006 and 2008, the Human Services Committee approved a request from Playground and Recreation Board to conduct a needs assessment of Evanston's indoor recreation space for the community. After learning that the school district 202 was going to complete a similar needs study for their fieldhouse, city staff and the district administrators, along with the city council and the school board, agreed to work together. City staff and District 202 administrators developed and released a joint request for qualifications. Due to the concerns over the high cost of that needs study, the Human Services Committee modified their recommendation and instead recommended that the Playground and Recreation Board conduct additional public meetings with 202 to gather more public input in the place of the needs study. The Playground and Recreation Board and District 202 gathered additional public input during three community meetings. Results of these additional meetings revealed that the community's needs had not changed. Feedback in 2008 was similar to that in 2003, but with more frustration expressed by the public due to the perceived lack of action. January 2009, Playground and Recreation Board presented a recommendation to the Human Services Committee to construct a new, approximately 93,000-square-foot facility at the southwest corner of Robert Crown Park with the following program elements. Reconstruct the facilities of Robert Crown Center. Expand ice programming to provide two full sheets of ice with associated locker rooms. Provide additional space for our special recreation and community programming and provide a branch library. You can see there below is estimated costs based on $210 a square foot, and obviously it's just an estimate. Members of the Human Services Committee advised the Playground and Recreation Board to come back with projected costs for constructing a new Robert Crown Center and to continue discussions with school district 202, including forming a committee to work on the project. The fieldhouse project at the high school is currently on hold and will not likely be moved forward until 2012 or until funding for the project is identified by District 202. City Council then identified Robert Crown Center as one of their top 12 priorities in September of 2009. The Playground and Recreation Board created a subcommittee to work on the Robert Crown Center project. This subcommittee created a work group that includes members of the Parks Foundation Board and Evanston residents. The group began discussing a series of fundraising initiatives. The city also received a $750,000 grant from the state of Illinois. We have developed three options, and I'm sure there are probably many more, that we would present this evening to the city council. The first is to develop a request for proposal to update the probable construction costs that were identified in the forensic study and move to implement. The second was to complete renovation, develop an RFP to study and develop probable construction costs to completely renovate the existing center and move to implement. And the difference, obviously, is one is a partial improvements, the other is complete. And the third option is to develop a request for information and qualifications from interested companies to design, build, finance, and operate any one of the four components, or all of the four components, to reconstruct the Robert Crown Center. Based on the options selected this evening, the city staff will return to the city council in early 2010 with an RFP or have decided with an RFI and Q. And that pretty much is an overview of the activities that have occurred over the last 10 years or so with Robert Crown.
And Madam Mayor, just to amplify a little bit on Mr. Gainer's presentation... And Madam Mayor, just to amplify a little bit on Mr. Gainer's presentation, it's my recommendation to the council that we should shoot to do this with no money to the city, that this should be a national project. We could, I think, find interested parties that would be interested in designing, building, operating, and financing this facility. And my recommendation to the council would be to go with option three, and that is to do a solicitation of those companies, do it nationally, get feedback at that point, and from there then do a specific request for proposal with what Evanston wants in this facility. I think we've had interested parties come to us with their ideas. I think the Evanston City Council should articulate what your ideas are. I think there's been lots of community work. I think we pretty much know what you want, but again, I think go for the whole enchilada and try to identify a company that can partner with us, design the project, build the project, operate the project, and finance the project at no immediate direct cost to Evanston taxpayers. You know, I think there's a company out there, we may not know them, they may not know us as we sit here this evening, but I think this can be a real great project and I think it's a national project and would encourage the council to look at option three.
I agree with you completely. Alderman Wilson?
I agree completely. This is, to me, and I think hopefully most of us, this is or should be a top priority. We are losing revenue opportunities. This is, it's not just an ice rink, this is a community facility. The facilities are woefully inadequate. For anybody who, who doesn't spend time there, perhaps you should. And hopefully, once the new facility is done, many more people will do so. There, as I said, there's a lot of opportunity for increasing the revenue. We have programming, there's daycare, there is opportunities for perhaps study space, branch library space, things of that nature. Of course, we wouldn't have to pay rent for that. And there's already been some interest expressed from outside vendors to perhaps fund the construction, fund a portion of the construction in exchange for operating these facilities. So I think we're likely to get some, some excellent ideas and concepts. It's very costly to operate. There could be alternatives that we could look at that would be very green. I've seen suggestions that you could build the ice underground. Generally, an ice rink is, it takes a lot of energy, but there are some creative opportunities to perhaps limit that and I'm excited about the prospect. So hopefully, everybody is on board with, with suggesting opportunity three.
Alderman Burris?
I agree 100% with the idea that we can't spend taxpayer money to do this and there are a lot of wonderful options. And I've had conversations with entities that might be interested as well and they're sort of very excited about that. I also see it as a, not just the rink itself, but the wards around the rink as an economic development opportunity. If we're bringing people in there, the idea of, you know, in Alderman Jean Baptiste's ward, you've got a lot of commercial right there at that corner, be a great opportunity for those businesses to expand and looking at restaurants even, you know, you have people coming in for hockey tournaments, you know, staying in our hotels. I think there's just a lot of ways to look at it, not just as a recreation facility, but as in a generator for the, for the south side of Evanston as a destination point for Evanstonians as well as people from the north shore. So I'm, I'm pretty fired up about this idea.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, I think your direction was very clear there, so I'm not going to ask you if you got clarity.
I got it.
All right.
That completes our reports this evening.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn that company?
Motion adjourned.
Sorry, John. Thank you. City Clerk?
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
You can stay.
Eight to one, ma'am.
Good night, Lionel.
Warm milk and a pillow.